Thank you. All right, at this time I'd like to call the public hearing section of the Warrington Board of Alderman meeting for Tuesday, October 20th, 2015 to order. Mr. Jack Hannif, if you want to come forward and present.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item we have is a site plan approval request for Warrington Senior Housing, SPPUD-95, a proposed planned unit development. On September 3rd, 2015, a request was filed for approval of a site plan for a planned unit development with senior citizens apartments to be located at the proposed Warrington Senior Housing subdivision located at 1010 Hawthorne Village Drive. Property is zoned R3, high-density residential. For Appendix A, one residential, a household living. Nine planned unit developments. A conditional use permit is required. This site plan approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with a conditional use permit. CUP PUD-46 approval request as required per code. Motion for approval passed six to one with one absent and two vacancies at the October 1st, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions.
Thank you.
And the applicant is here. If you have any questions, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to open the podium to anybody from the public that has any issues or concerns. We ask you to announce who you are when you approach and keep it to a five-minute minimum, please, for maximum.
My name is Daniel Durbin. I live here in the town of Warrington. I live on Highway 47, probably right about in the middle. I pretty much see here a lot of stuff that goes on. Many, many years ago, under a previous mayor, we started our municipal court system. That first year, the numbers, I don't have very exact, but they're close. That first year we started that, the city took in almost a million dollars.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute?
Okay.
Is this in regards to the public hearing on the...
No, this is on just general...
Yeah, I'm actually going to open that up and after we open the Alderman meeting, this is just on the public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Durbin. I'll call you back up. Any on the public hearing for the SPPUD-95? Not seeing any, we'll move on to the next one.
One additional note on the site plan approval request. I'd like to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, public hearing notices, and my planning and zoning report. Next item I have is a conditional use permit approval request for Warrington Senior Housing, CUP-PUD-46, to be located at 1010 Hawthorne Village Drive. On September 3rd, 2015, a request was filed for a conditional use permit approval for a planned unit development with senior citizen apartments to be located at the proposed Warrington Senior Housing subdivision located at 1010 Hawthorne Village Drive. Property is zoned R3, high-density residential. Motion for approval passed six to one with one absent and two vacancies at the October 1st, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with the condition that a draft of covenants and restrictions for the development is provided to the city for review and/or approval, which includes maximum occupancy. I'd also like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, a planning and zoning report, and the public hearing notices.
So noted, thank you. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for discussion to the public for the CUP-PUD-46 for Hawthorne Senior Housing. If anybody has any comments or concerns, please come to the podium, announce who you are, and it's a five-minute maximum. Not seeing anybody, we will bring the public hearing section of this to a close.
Before we do, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I didn't understand last meeting if we were supposed to discuss issues in the public hearing section or wait until we're into the meeting. I think the answer was pretty unclear. So does somebody have some guidance as to that?
We believe when we discussed it, we were talking about bringing it back up during the meeting when the section comes to the section, bring it up. This is usually just for the public to voice any opinions if they need to.
Okay, so we weren't going to engage in conversation here? Okay, that's all we got.
But to be clear, if we had questions for the public during the regular meeting, we could engage them if they were here.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll bring the public hearing section to a close, and I will open the regular Board of Alderman meeting for October 20th, 2015 to an open. If you have any hats on, please take them off this time, and please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So next item on the agenda is something that I know I'm pretty excited about, I think everybody else is too. There's a proclamation for our Lady Warrior softball team. We've worked really hard to get where you guys are at, and you guys are doing awesome, and we know you're going to go all the way. With that, I appreciate everybody doing all they could.
When we go to the hospital, the school teachers were on the board to sing the school anthem.
All right, here we go, everyone look at the camera right here. One, two, three.
Hold it. Stretch.
Everybody get that?
Oh, look at my lips.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay, so Mayor, you want to read that?
Well, why don't you guys read it?
Jan is a great reading.
They're great, thank you.
The city of Warrington is proud to be the home of the Warrington R3 High School, where among the student athletes is an elite group of young women known as the Warrington Lady Warriors High School softball team. Whereas the Warrington Lady Warriors have displayed their highest level of sportsmanship and will be making their first appearance in the Missouri State semifinals on October 23rd in Springfield, Missouri. And whereas the ladies, the Warriors Lady, Warrington Lady Warriors carry an impressive record of 26 wins and two losses so far this season, which is the most wins in school history. And whereas by virtue of their accomplishment on the field, the Lady Warriors have brought great pride to their parents, friends, school, and entire community. And we wish them success at the state semifinals. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Eric Schluter and the Board of Alderman are extremely honored and proud to recognize the accomplishments of the Warrington R3 Lady Warrior softball team, and that special commendations is due all team members. The coaches and staff are making history as being the only Warrington R3 softball team to qualify for the state finals. And we wish them continued success this weekend, due to this 20th day of October, 2015.
Guys, I'm sure that your history teachers would appreciate it if you would stick around for the next two, two-and-a-half hours and have a meeting with us, learn a little bit more about our... Bye, ladies, good luck.
So what do we have, like three people left?
Yeah.
What?
It's all right.
I don't know.
Because you only have about 500.
Yeah, it's like $9,000.
The difference is half of these girls literally travel all year round for this. Their boys only play three months every year.
So since people on, watching this on YouTube don't know, the temperature just dropped about four degrees in this room, I believe, from them leaving. No, I'm really proud of those guys, I think they've done a great job, I really do, so... Well, next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda.
First item we have is the regular board meeting minutes from October 6th, 2015. We have the monthly grounds and maintenance report, the monthly public works report, the monthly police report, the monthly building code enforcement report, approval of the fire extinguisher maintenance bid awarded to Fire Safety Incorporated in the amount of $1,481, which was the only bid, and approval to purchase two 10-foot western snowplows from Knappide and St. Peters, Missouri in the amount of $12,030, the low bid, and the budgeted amount on that was $17,500.
All right, there again, anybody have any questions or concerns? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Person Castily, signed by Alderman Dreier, vote called vote.
Alderman Dreier?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda is hearing from the public, and since I interrupted you, I apologize about that, but I'd like to invite you back up, Mr. Durbin.
Okay, I guess we'll start this over.
Okay.
My name's Daniel Durbin, I live in the city of Warrington, Highway 47, I'm right in the middle of everything I get to see here, plus the fact, as I said before, I probably eat and drink in this town more probably than most anybody around. I'm sorry, I'm happy to say it because I, we have a lot of lunches, and at those lunches we meet and talk to a lot of people. One of the biggest comments that I've heard from the public is the factor of the municipal court and the amount of tickets and everything else we've been riding. And this is not on the police department, I've been to enough of these meetings to know that if those numbers drops, when you look on your things, if those numbers drops, they're asking the police chief, how come, you know, the income basically is what it's all about, it's income, has gone down, and most of the time it's because an officer or something has quit. But we started this municipal court pulling in almost a million dollars the first year. The second year it dropped down to about $800,000, rounding things off a little bit, to my high side naturally. And then it stuck there for maybe a year, and people made comments in cafeterias and stuff like that when they were at work. They said, you know, do you go to the mall down in the cafeteria? And they said, no, I'm not going back to that town. I've gotten a ticket, my friends all getting tickets, we're not going back to the mall or to... Well, then the mall closed. If you notice, when the mall closed, the amount that the municipal court pulled in dropped by about $200,000. Kind of got to show you that maybe we're not so friendly. Then it's been dropping steadily, now it's down to $450,000. For a town this size, that is a huge amount of money that we're pulling out of everybody's pockets, out-of-town people, in-town people. Why can't we go back to the old system? The old system, the county took care of everything. They paid for the judge, they paid for the clerk, they paid for everything. We still get the fines, but we do not have to have a municipal court that is, that is run to make money, period. And we've, all these other towns, Ferguson, San Anz, are, you know, they thought it was a cash cow too. I think it's time we got away from that and got into the more friendlier town and maybe write half as many tickets. There's, I'm right on 47. There's plenty of people to write tickets to that do something really bad. So that's all my comment for the night.
All right. As always, we give a chance for rebuttal, if anybody chooses to.
Well, I'd like to know who "we" is. I mean, you referenced several times "we", "we hear this", is that you and...
Oh, me, as I said, I've...
Do you represent somebody?
No, I don't represent, I represent the people of Warrington, actually. People like you that I talk to constantly, people in restaurants, like we're up there eating at Brewskis tonight, you know, we're having a meal. I came down here because I wanted to come to the meeting. There's half a dozen of us there. I see and talk to people constantly on lunchtime, there's not a day that, we don't, pretty much eat at Brewskis, we eat it at the Chinese place. The people come up, and, and people know that this is probably a pet peeve of mine, and I get comments from all kinds of people on not just this, there's not too many things that I don't hear about, you know, from somebody. They just come over and say, hey, did you know this happened, that happened, this happened? And I said, I deal with some of the city officials, and most of the time I make sure I check my facts before I repeat anything.
Yeah, well, I'm not questioning your facts, I just want, wanting to know, you know, when people say, "we do, we hear this", and people, I don't know who that represents sometimes. You know, I guess the thing that's a little bit surprising to me is I've sat up here and asked questions about the number of tickets, but never was it a question about income, it's a question about activity. And so, and I can't, I couldn't even tell you, I mean, you mentioned that the tax, the fines dropped from a million to 450, which I would think would be a good thing, you know, and, I mean, it's also a question of a bottom line. If you shift over stuff to the county courts, you're certainly going to pay for it, they're not doing it for free. And I'm also curious as to how much of that 450 is non-traffic related issues, which would also be part of the equation too, because, you know...
I'd actually like to know how much some of these tickets cost, so we can start enforcing those specific ones.
That's another thing too.
I'm kidding, because we never even talk about revenue.
That's another thing, as far as, how much did the price of the tickets go up? When we started our municipal courts, what amount did the tickets go up? Did they just stay at the same, or have we raised the level? These are things that I just want you guys to think about and talk about, and see if maybe we need to go in a different direction. I said, if you look at the factor of, well, if you look at like Montgomery, I talked to the guy who basically runs Montgomery, and he said, their ticket amount they pull in a year is $38,000. And he says to me, he goes, and if it gets much more than that, we're going to have to look and see what the, what the problem is, and why we're writing so many tickets.
Yeah, but you've got to admit, Montgomery's not Warrington.
They're not Warrington. But Winsfield did barely over a million dollars. How big is Winsfield? Winsfield's a heck of a lot bigger than Warrington. We're talking a place that's probably six, seven times in population plus all the people coming in. So when you look at the percentage-wise, we're, we're pulling in an awful lot of income. And it wouldn't be income, it would probably save us money in the long run if we're not paying for a judge, we're not paying for clerk, we're not paying for all the paperwork that it takes. I think we could probably, in the long run, write half as many tickets and still come out ahead. Not that we're supposed to come out ahead, we're supposed to be getting...
But that also implies if you're writing half the number of tickets, and these are legitimate tickets, you're avoiding, you're ignoring half the incidents where tickets should be written.
Okay, when...
I mean, isn't that kind of implied that?
If, if you think that's implied, I've kind of checked myself and people around. I guarantee you that there was not anybody in here that doesn't break the speeding ticket laws in this town at any given time. I've, I kind of, everybody knows, but this is a big thing on, you know, on my agenda, basically. And I give hassle all the time when I'm driving down the road and I see them, and they, they zip through that thread like they shouldn't. They forgot to put on the turn signal. And I just kind of mentioned to them jokingly, you know, that, hey, you know, you need a ticket. They have a lot of discretion as far as how many tickets, and I'm sure they don't write nearly as many tickets as they, they could, because, I said, I live right there, I see people do all kinds of stupid stuff all the time. So, just something to think about.
Let me, and I agree, I think anybody can bring up any type of issue, and we do need to mull it over, we need to see both sides. There are a couple factors in it that I will say. One is, we've never, nor do I see or anticipate us ever taking away officer discretion on who they write and who they don't write. I think we open ourselves up for major litigation when we do that, on the other end. Also, you had mentioned one town, I will say, looking at stats, being in the law enforcement field, St. Anne's huge on their numbers. I mean, they can't even, we don't compare them.
No.
I think we're at a 7% or even less than that 3% on, on the total income, isn't it?
It was single digits.
Right.
I don't recall exactly what it was.
Where they were on 20 and 30% or better. You know, there again, I mean, I, I do think we need to mull over some things, and chew on some things, but I won't say that, I, I know for a fact, nobody here has ever encouraged going out and writing mandatory tickets or quotas or anything else. So, I mean, I don't want that to be perceived, or I don't do, nor do I want it to be something that...
I'm just going by the factor of when they ask the police chief, you know, why are the income in a municipal? To me, that's, that's, no, this is not this administration here, I'm talking about previously.
Previous ones.
And I've, you know, I've seen them ask, you know, how come, you know, your income's down? We lost a couple police officers and stuff.
I think our questions have been on that, because this has been almost three years since we've done this, has been, how come your calls are down? But we never asked about revenue and...
I've never been asked why revenue is any different.
Well, I'm not saying revenue is effective, you know, I don't know why they, they particularly say, at that time they said that, you know, why are the numbers down?
But I also would say...
And maybe the numbers down, he meant was the fact that we've had fewer arrests or whatever.
Well, we had fewer cops on the road there for many, many, many months. But I, I think I want to make one comment, because this has come up numerous times, and not just this topic, but in the last few months, things have been addressed in the public, and I know they're being addressed around town, and it keeps coming up about past administrations. I don't care about past administrations, I've been on this board for, you know, this is my second term. You guys want to bring something that we've done, bring it. Bring it on, but I don't want to talk anymore about people in the past, because that's not our problem.
That's true, but we're, we're at this 400,000 range, and to me, for such a small town, for what we got going on, I don't see why we have to be in that number.
But yet you just said you think we need more speeding tickets down on Highway 47.
I didn't say we didn't, I never said we needed...
Because you identified all these things, because let me tell you, I'd sit outside your house and I'd put tickets down every single day.
And you'd have nobody coming to town, that's what I'm getting from people.
I think they're people that live in our town.
I am not going to this town. Are the standard comment I get, well, it's getting dark outside, it's time for me to go, you know, people leaving.
I don't think that's the case.
Maybe I should record some of this stuff, and that way it's...
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm not going to argue.
No, no, can I just make one more comment? You know, I think some of this stuff is putting in this discretion. I am not opposed for the city to sit down and take a look to see which way is more cost beneficial. I mean, I think that's the responsible thing to do, to say, if we were to go to municipal court through the county, assuming the same volume, would it be more cost beneficial to do it with or without the county or with the, I'm not opposed to that, realizing that if they come out about the same, there may be non-financial reasons where you'd make a decision one way or the other. I'm not opposed to that, I don't know issues with that, but I think it's a lot more beneficial to take a look at something where you can see it black and white than speculate. And so what I, so what I'd like to, whether it's you speculating or we speculate, so I'd rather, if, I don't see us having a problem doing that.
We could perform an analysis on it.
We could do an analysis.
And see if it would be more practical, and I just think, I think the cost factors are so close.
That's the reason we changed it to begin with, it was cheaper for us to do it ourselves than have, pay a county.
Well, we can look at it.
Just to, just for notes here, looking at the police report citations for the last month, it's roughly 120 speeding tickets, so four speeding, four speeding tickets a day.
Yeah, but, no, I mean, all tickets.
You specifically mentioned though that speeding tickets are...
Speeding is a minimal one, there's a lot of other...
That's what people come through town and get tickets for.
I hear...
Because they're getting a ticket because they, they don't have their lights on, or they don't have valid registration, or they don't have a valid license plate, all those things, it doesn't matter what city they're in, they're getting it. You specifically mentioned speeding tickets, we're talking about four speeding tickets a day.
No, I'm not talking, I didn't, I might have said speeding tickets, but I'm talking about all tickets. I'm talking about left turn tickets, right turn tickets, tickets where the person stopped too close to the stop sign. Tickets are the volume ticket, you're stopping a person, they're getting some type of a ticket. It does not do our city any good when all they get is a negative opinion. You know how good people feel when they get pulled over and they get let go? That's the euphoria effect, oh, I did something wrong, but, you know, we talked about it in his discretion, he let us go. So, you know...
But it is a good time to bring this up, since we have the report right in front of us.
If this was, if we had, you know, several hundred, a thousand tickets, and we're talking about, the, the city is writing 50 tickets a day, I, I think, I think maybe we have an argument. I have a hard time believing it.
How many tickets are being written on a daily basis, for everything?
I don't believe it's down on a daily, not on a daily basis.
Yeah, but most of the things are all under, under...
What is it, 250 or 300? I'm ballparking it, looking, and I'm probably overestimating, right? So we're talking about 10 tickets a day, maybe?
If that...
That's, that's a, that's a high estimation, 10 tickets a day in a town of 8,000?
Town of 8,000, you have more people going through?
So what should it be?
Okay, you get, that's, say it's 10 tickets a day, you've got 10 people that are, you know, that are leaving here, or, or live here, they're getting a negative opinion of the city. And, and why do we have so many? Maybe 10 tickets a day is not too many.
I'm confused, I guess I'm confused with, I guess the, the balance here is trying to figure out, we're having a positive image in the public and keeping public safety, how those two balance? I think that, that, I've been given tickets before in this city that were well-deserved. I didn't leave angry at the city or the police officer that pulled me over, I'm angry at myself for not obeying the laws that are very clear. It's not like we have, we don't have speed traps, we don't have confusing street signs, we, it's, it's not like there's a, a no-left turn somewhere where you would, you would think you could turn left and there's some police officer waiting there to bust you to do something tricky. We have a great police force that's doing a fantastic job of doing their best to keep the public safe. And I would much rather see them write an extra five tickets and make sure that my kid doesn't get hit walking out in the street because someone's speeding, than worry about somebody that's not going to come back to Warrington, because they got busted going 20 miles over the speed limit.
And a lot of times it's only 10, but who's counting?
But we do count, specifically, there's ordinances, and it tells us how fast they were going over the speed limit when they get their ticket.
Yes.
So people do count.
Yes, but, you know, there's, there's a perceived thing, and I'm, and I'm just going, I'm just relaying what, what I hear, see, mainly what I hear from people, you know, and see, because I, as I said, I live right there, I see the, I see the stops, you know, I see a bunch of stops, and, you know, it's like Christmas time sometime with all the lights.
And I will say this, I'm just going to go ahead and interject, I know...
Well, I'm passing my five minutes anyway.
The, I, I think it's agreeable that we'll look into analysis just on a basis that I think that is something we can do.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you coming forth and stating your opinion.
As I said, I just, I'm just bringing up what I hear from people and what I see, and I would, you know, as I said, I know the, I'd just like to have you guys look at it and see maybe if we went back to the, you know, the old style of municipal courts and, and just going back, I said, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, I appreciate it, we'll look into it. All right, next item on the agenda would be the Board of Alderman comments.
No, I was told I couldn't talk.
You were not.
I did not.
He said you can't talk forever on that one issue.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
Anyone? I'll keep mine brief, I will say I attended the circus, and that was a lot of fun, I don't know if anybody out there did, but it was...
Did you ride the elephant?
No, they didn't make him...
No, they didn't, the elephant had tender feet.
In other words, he needed to go on a diet.
No, it truly did, it would, could not walk on gravel, it had tender feet, is what I was told. So therefore, I didn't ride the elephant. But I did get... But I did get to stay with my kids for the circus, and it was a lot of fun. Also, hometown Halloween, mixed reviews, but I thought it was great. It was fun to see the kids out there. I enjoyed it a lot. So I would really, I'm hoping I can plug it as much as I can for our next coming up hometown. I believe it's the, I always get this wrong when I say, is it the gobbler giveaway?
Gobbler giveaway.
Thank you. It sounds like it'll be fun as well, so please, look it up and attend. All right, next item on the agenda would be the approval for destruction of records. Questions, or did you review the information? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the list of records to be destroyed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Halli, seconded by Alderman Deloy. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloy?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
I think it's sad that we're going to get rid of all our waivers of pictures and stuff. Can we keep that?
Next item on the agenda would be hearing from the Director of Operations Finance Officer, Terry Thor.
Thank you. My first item this evening is request for approval to start work on the new pool project. We closed on the property that's in Bay City Parkway last week, so it officially is new city property. And one of the first things that we need to do is have some work done by the soil engineers. A wetlands report, an impact assessment, endangered species, and bat assessment is all required any time that we have ground that is forest area or has any water. The total for that done by the engineering firm is five thousand three hundred dollars. And then with your approval of the remainder of this project budget, to then start working on the preliminary site layout, having the engineers determine what the best locations on the site are going to be for the proposed improvements that we're going to make, and get that laid out, and get some cost estimates. Assuming that we get cleared environmentally, that we don't have any of the endangered species bats or other things that would prevent us from being able to do it, then to start the clearing work on the property. If we do find that we have the special endangered bat species, then we are limited to the time of year that we can actually clear the property. So a lot of things will be hinging upon what the findings from the initial environmental assessment is. So my request for you this evening is to have approval to start working on the pool park project with a budgeted amount total in this period of fifty thousand dollars.
I have a question.
What's the timeline for this first assessment? It will depend upon whether they see any of the initial signs for any of these endangered species type of things. If they can go out and it doesn't appear that there's anything there that they can investigate further. It could be done in a couple of months period of time. If there are any of the things that they have to investigate further, it's really an unknown how long that will take. But we really cannot proceed with actual engineering of the site until we know what we're dealing with there. And it would have been the same situation with the Pink New Street property.
Sure, yeah, I just didn't know what the turnaround was.
I think it's probably important for the public to know that we've already done some preliminary work on the ground before we closed in terms of looking at the soil, looking at those normal type of issues you do. So the city didn't go out and purchase it, and they go, oh, now we got this due diligence to do. We did due diligence on this before. This is just one thing that happened, that happens afterwards, that we need to also address. I'm just kind of glad we didn't talk about endangered bats from the softball players here.
Yes, very much so.
Shoe shorts.
I need you to think.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the new pool project in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Deloy. Motion made by Alderman Deloy, seconded by Alderson Halli. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloy?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
My next item for you this evening is along with that pool park project, the walking trail and dog park that's budgeted in this budget period, a portion of what will need to be done with this as well, because we don't know where exactly this will end up being the best location on that piece of property is preliminary site layout, again, clearing costs, and then initial construction projections and startup work. It is possible that this will not actually happen within this fiscal year, depending upon how long the environmental testing is. But we need to have this part of the project approved, so that when I start working on engineering layout, we know exactly what parts, what improvements that we're going to make within this park.
Any questions?
I do have one comment. A number of people have said, you're going to spend seventy-five thousand dollars for a dog park? You know, I think we've got to realize that this is a, probably a high-end estimate for walking trails and a whole complex. It's not specifically for a dog park, but that's included as part of it. And I would think that this would be a high-end number anyway, because if you're talking about cutting trails and doing stuff like that, that could be where most of your expense lies, so.
A lot of it, there's a lot of underbrush on this property. So a big part of the clearing cost is not necessarily going to be trees, but more getting the underbrush out so that you can actually make a trail.
Right.
So it absolutely is not all a dog park. There'll be a lot of clearing for the walking trails as well.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the walking trail and dog park project in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Cassely, seconded by Alderman Ock. Roll call vote, please.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloy?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
No.
Alderman Frederick?
No.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries four to two.
And then a couple of operational updates for you. The feasibility study for the potential new Western interchange. We've received one response from a firm who's interested in doing that feasibility study. If you'll recall, we sent the request out to three firms that were recommended by our comprehensive plan firm that's doing that video consulting, and Joy Howard, who's our financial consultant. Of those, only one response was received. We actually received an email from another who said they'd love to work on our project. However, they're so busy at this point, they can't take on any new work. So I guess the good news in that is, these types of firms are busy, so things are moving. But we received one response. My question for you is, would you like to schedule an interview with that firm to get some idea from them what your thoughts are before we move forward with anything else?
Let me ask you a question on the finance side. Did we have a feel from talking to the consulting firm what a typical price would be for this type of feasibility service?
We do not, and I think we won't have that until we actually speak with them about what it is we specifically are looking for, what the parameters of that would be. But I think before we do that, we really need to identify the firm that you're interested in using, and then sit down with them and have them give us a proposal for what the cost would be.
In which we could then go back and, if we think it's too high, or, or from talking to people who are used to this, it's maybe too high, then we have an option to do other things with other firms. But I think until we sit down and talk to them, we really have no decision we can make. So I think, from my perspective, I think we need to sit down and talk with them.
And would you like to try to do that perhaps prior to the next meeting, so that you don't have to schedule a separate night? If we can work that out?
I would think so, from my perspective.
Is everyone available, maybe starting at, what time, prior to the meeting? What works?
Anybody else have any time constraints?
I can call one from Montana.
Yeah, I don't have any issues on that, before that meeting.
I'll tell you what, why don't you check with the firm and see what they, you know, I mean, I know they're, they should kind of cater us, but why don't you check and see what the time of feasibility, email us, and we'll let you know.
Well, I think I need to know what your availability is.
I think everybody's pretty much open, so five-thirty, six o'clock, or five o'clock, I mean, I'm sorry.
I can do five.
Sometime after five, five or later, whatever we think we need for time.
Five o'clock, let's set it at five.
All right, I'll see if I can get that scheduled, and then I'll let you all.
We don't have plenty of time for questions or anything else we may have.
Sure. Okay, I'll see if I can get that done. The only other thing that I have for you this evening is more for the public purposes, to put the word out, that the park restaurants will be closing on October thirtieth, which is the Friday before Halloween. That's when Brad's crew will shut them down for the winter. So for those that close in the winter that are not heated, that will be the day that they will be closed down. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from our zoning official and building commissioner, Jack Hannah.
First item I have is just a quick clarification. During the previous Board of Adjustment meeting, there was a brief discussion regarding setbacks in some of the historic neighborhoods. And I was just checking to see if you'd be interested in me putting any information together for you now, or just have that included in part of the comprehensive plan that we're updating.
Look, can I talk about the issue for a second? I've sat through two Board of Adjustment meetings in the last year. And this is basically the process where somebody can go and get a variance when they're doing construction, or they're doing, putting a fence up or anything. And I find these meetings to be really difficult because of the state requirements in the meeting. I also find them difficult because the decision of the Board of Adjustments isn't reviewed by the city council, so they're acting as an independent body making decisions. And when somebody says to me, I'm thinking about going and get a variance, my first comment to them is, go out and hire a lawyer. Because in order to go through the application and answer the bullet points, which were in the minutes, you almost need to have somebody who has a fairly decent understanding of legal process as it relates to real estate in order to make your case before the Board of Adjustments. So my first reaction to sitting, to listening to those two things, I think, one of them, I don't know if I agree with their decision. The other one, I did agree with them. In both cases, the results of the Board of Adjustment was to deny the request. And so the result of that is we have two pieces of property, vacant lots sitting in town with no homes on them. Now, in fairness to the issue, in the last one in particular, they could have built a home on that piece of property without getting a variance. They just couldn't build the home in the way they wanted to be built. You tell me if I'm wrong on this, but that's how I sort of, so it's not like these properties are unbuildable, but if you're going to build different types of homes, there's issues. And so on this piece of property, they wanted to have some variance, because they were interested in, well, how does the neighborhood look? And what is the impact of the neighborhood? Do we want to front this street? Or do we want to front another street because of this corner property? And so my first reaction to, should we look at this, was no, because it's kind of like what Damien always says, if we already got a law in the books, why produce another law? But I think in this case, these are really difficult to deal with. And like I said, I'd have a hard time standing before the Board of Adjustments and arguing a case in my situation. And this last meeting, who was representing, the applicant was a member of the P and Z board who wasn't on the Board of Adjustments. And I think he struggled with that, too, because on all three steps, he tended to have the same answer, which should have required a different answer. So I would like to see us take the time to see if we can address some of these variances in neighborhoods that have been sitting around for a long time and already have homes that are out of compliance with the current law, because they're so old. To see if there's a way that we can make the process easier for an applicant who's willing to do something in an older neighborhood, so we don't end up with vacant lots. Because they don't, they just can't work under the new housing bill. So my preference would be that we move forward, but Jack taking the look would make sense.
And streamlining the approach.
Streamlining, because in my thinking, if we can get all these off of the Board of Adjustments, I'd be a happy camper, because it's really not a fair process, in my opinion. And if the city's not doing it, it's a state issue. So just to let you know. So I would think, I'd like for us to move forward. I don't know where anybody else is at.
Is there anybody else?
No, I think we should go ahead. I agree with Gary. Can we, can we go ahead before we wait for the whole comprehensive plan?
Whatever you guys recommend me to do, I can definitely gather information for you. I would have to consult with Chris on, I know there's certain things that Missouri state law requires, and I'm sure we can't override, but I can sure get information together for you.
Well, certainly if we get it together ahead of time, then we could see if it makes sense for the comprehensive plan, or it's something we just don't need to put in the plan because we can't work with it. So to me, that would be why I would prefer to start out, instead of saying, this isn't the plan, then we start the process and go, can't do anything with it, so really shouldn't have been in the plan to begin with.
So I guess my question is, does that actually require a vote, just asking him to proceed with gathering the information? I think it's pretty unanimous that gathering information is what we're seeking more.
Okay.
More of.
Next item I have is a proposed preliminary plat for Warrenton Senior Housing, S U B D dash fifty-four. Proposed preliminary plat approval for Warrenton Senior Housing to be located at ten-ten Hawthorne Village Drive. Property is zone R three, high-density residential. Motion for approval passed six to one, with one absent and two vacancies at the October first, two thousand fifteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, with no additional conditions.
We can actually open this up if you guys like to make comments. If you do not, it's fine.
Well, while they're preparing, come up, I mean, I think some of the issues brought up weren't necessarily germane to the plat. There was probably more questions that came up as related to the conditional use, which got a condition. And so I think, to me, that's where issues lie, isn't with the plat and what's there.
Good evening. My name's Joel Oliver from Gardner Capital Development. It's a pleasure to be back before you all this evening. We have a representative here from Hockton Engineering also to answer technical questions that you don't mean to answer. We did prepare a PowerPoint. We've shown you information before. I'm happy to go through this for the benefit of the public, if you'd like. You also have a hard copy in front of you. That's up to you. Do you want me to quickly go through it? Is that acceptable? All right. As we previously discussed, we are proposing a third phase of housing next to our current two phases of Hawthorne housing. On the screen is a rendering of what the proposed buildings will look like. I'll just say click for that. As you all are aware, Gardner is a Missouri company. We started in Springfield about twenty-four years ago. We're now headquarters out of St. Louis. We have several main lines of business. Can you click the next? Yeah, thanks. So we've done over fifty housing projects total, and that's in about twelve states. I did add another piece of information on the third slide that we hadn't, excuse me, shown you before. And this is small, but it's in your packet, so hopefully you can read it. This outlines the thirty-three affordable housing developments that we've developed in Missouri over the last twenty-four years. And this was to kind of speak to our commitment to the state, our commitment to this community. These are all still projects we own. As you see, some of them here are eighteen years out. As a business model, we always own our projects for at least fifteen years, and very normally, it's longer than that. As you can see, of these thirty-three in Missouri, I believe about thirteen were senior projects, like we're proposing for this third phase. And the other twenty were family housing, like the two phases that we currently have here. Click. As we previously mentioned, I added to this slide, we do have a website. This is a new thing that we're doing, so Warrenton is kind of our test here, putting up a website. So it's warrentonseniorhousing.com. And basically, whenever we have a new piece of information, we update this website. What we found is that in communities, misinformation is very pervasive, and as soon as you hand somebody a piece of paper, they show it to their neighbor, and two days later, there's, something has changed. So we now encourage people, go look at the website. Go look at the website. What is there should be current. If we have a new rendering, a new site plan, whatever it is. What is there should be current, if we have a new rendering, a new site plan, whatever it is, that's the place to go. So this is the forty-six units, they are all age restricted for fifty-five, tenants that are fifty-five and older. There will be a community center at the property with walking trails, as we previously discussed. The income will be restricted to tenants who earn sixty percent of the area median income or less. We will have onsite management and services that will be comparable to the other phases. That is utilizing prior healthcare as we do previously, and the same management company that is already there. Click. Here's less pretty two-D rendering, but it is a combination of brick, stone, and hardy plank exterior, and also we have patios. My personal opinion is this is kind of a newer design that we are building. The product that we've built in the other two phases is very nice, has held up very well. We have a different approach now, if you will, and it's more of an urban planning approach. And it's really, the attempt is to give every resident a sense of place, kind of this is my front door, this is my place, you know, staggering fronts. We found there's some positive psychological benefits there to kind of it being your home, so click. You all are very familiar with the location, so there it is for you. Click. That is the front elevation for the community center. Click. And then the site plan, as we previously discussed, shows the walking trails in the front with the community center and a gazebo right next to that, so that people utilizing those two outdoor spaces have ready access to the community center facilities and things of that nature. And then the layout is, has not changed since we previously presented it.
I have a question on this slide. The blue line, which I assume is water, that's why, is that water runoff from?
That's a creek.
That's the, that's a creek, so it's being fed from the east down to the west?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, okay.
See, that's why he's here.
I had to ask him a question, otherwise he'd make the turf.
Absolutely, that's teamwork at its finest. Click. These are the typical unit layouts, the, there are two different layouts, they're all two-bedroom, one-bathroom units. The one is just a standard unit, the other is an ADA accessible unit. All of our developments now use elements of universal design so that someone in a wheelchair should be able to make it around a unit. The one on the right is specifically ADA compliant though. Click. The next two slides are just some sample interior shots of similar developments that we've done. And that is it, so that is, is the presentation that we had. Would you like me to take questions now, how would you, I'd be happy to do it however you want.
I mean, I have questions on the conditional use part, got the site plan.
Just on the.
Think it's a good-looking project?
We're excited about it.
Let's actually do that.
Preliminary plat.
Yeah, just preliminary plat, I'm sorry.
And that, the preliminary plat is on the bill afterwards for approval, is that, I get that right?
Yes. Yes, there's a bill ordinance.
Preliminary plat's on the, that's the bill, so we'll vote on that at the end.
Okay, the next item I have then is the site plan approval request for the Warrenton Senior Housing. Proposed planned unit development. And motion for approval passed six to one with one absent and two vacancies at the October first, two thousand and fifteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions from the P and Z commission. I would like to recommend a couple of conditions to be placed on the approval for the site plan. That the final landscape plan shall be submitted and approved by the city prior to the start of construction of the project. That the final stormwater plan shall be submitted and approved by the city prior to the start of construction of the project. And that the final plat approval must be completed with one year of the preliminary plat approval date and prior to the start of construction. Pretty basic.
Let me ask everybody.
Conditions that.
So this is nothing I'm.
Gives them time to, to finish their design, but keeps their project moving.
So you don't see any issue with the, with the request?
No, sir.
No issues whatsoever. And any, any comments? All right, well.
Now, this one, we do not have an ordinance ready for.
This will be the last for approval, or entertaining motion for the site plan with the contingency set by, I guess, trying to think of a way to word this, contingencies set forth by, or conditions set forth by the planning and zoning, I'm sorry, correction. What's that?
About Jack, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the way to word this correctly, by, can I say his name, or state his name, or is it just by his office?
You can state his name.
Okay.
The condition.
The condition set forth by Jack Hannaf for the approval of the Hawthorne Senior Housing. I'll repeat that. Entertaining motion for the approval of the site plan with the contingency set up, or the condition set forth by Jack Hannaf for the Hawthorne Senior Housing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Frederick, signed by Alderson Holly, roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
I like the website.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I say one thing about that, so the, did you watch the video on it?
I can't because I would be not paying attention.
So do watch the video, we actually hired up a professional production company to, to create this video. And these are our senior projects around the state of Missouri, they're actual residents, they weren't paid or compensated in any way or coached or anything like that, so people can really see, because we get that a lot, like, who are these people, who are these tenants? So I had to advise you guys to watch this.
All right, next item, Jack.
Next item I have is the conditional use permit approval request for Warrenton Senior Housing to be located at ten ten Hawthorne Village Drive. Motion for approval passed six to one with one absent and two vacancies at the October first, two thousand and fifteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with the condition that a draft of the covenants and restrictions for development is provided to the city for review and/or approval, which includes maximum occupancy. The applicant has submitted a, a example of the covenants and restrictions that the city attorney has reviewed. And I'd like to recommend that the, part of the approval would be the condition that the covenants and restrictions must be completed in substantially the same format as the example that was submitted and recorded prior to the, to the building permit application.
So when we do any occupancy permits for any other permit of this type, do we ever go into the number of tenants, the number of residents?
Their sample shows what the state allows for the number of occupants per bedroom, and their letter also addressed it.
Why is that part of our conditional approval?
I believe it was requested because of it being the planned unit development. One of the commissioners had a question, wanting to make sure that in the two-unit building that there wouldn't be a family of ten inside of it.
But we never do that for any other type of project, right? I mean.
I believe the board has the right to put a condition on any project that's brought before them.
But we don't have occupancy standards. And what I found bizarre about the meeting was a lot of discussion about who would be there, would a grandson live with his grandfather, how many people? And I just thought that was really inappropriate. First of all, because I don't believe we have those standards. So if you ask him to come in with a certain standard, you got to say, here's the benchmark, and we don't have a benchmark. And then I found it really strange, and we were trying to impose in the covenants certain things, such as that, which is quite frankly, in my opinion, none of the city's business. This is a contractual relationship between Missouri Housing Development Corporation, who is the lender, and the developer. And that would be, and we shouldn't be in the middle of that. I mean, if those two parties come to restrictions and covenants, after our review, clearly don't violate city ordinance, then we shouldn't be imposing the occupancy one as part of what we're doing. Because we don't walk into any neighborhood that has a, who's setting up a neighborhood corporation, you know, for whatever reason. We don't come in there and impose certain things and say, you got to do this, you got to do that. I think it's city government stepping too far for us to be stepping in areas where we don't even have a standard. So, I mean, I'm glad that we could approve this as it was through, because I could see that being somewhat problematic. And I didn't think it was a reasonable request on the part of the P and Z.
And I, and I think the P and Z commission was just asking for some clarity, which their documents definitely stated the facts.
But it's not over and above what you would have had anyway, right?
Yes, so our, our recommendation based on experience were, was two people per unit. And we produced the leases for the first two phases, the state puts a lease addendum on there, and there are lease guidelines for both of those phases, that that, that is a standard. It's two people per, per unit, or two people per bedroom, so we have four people per.
But it, but it doesn't address the issue of visitors and all this other stuff that came up in the meeting?
Correct.
But I just, my fear is we put that stipulation here, I mean, they're already complying with it. But then are we setting the precedence for other building projects that we have to start putting the same type of conditions on?
We're not asking to put a, an additional condition to this based on occupancy. The P and Z commission, the P and Z commission was asking for some verification for the number, which they provided. And we're not enforcing any stricter rule than what they were already designed to do.
And it's not our place to enforce it. If we don't have ordinance on the book, don't force it.
Right, as I say, if, if we're, if you're looking for a precedent to be set, it has to be done throughout an ordinance. You can add certain conditions on to any type of permit that's requested, but you cannot set anything until we set a final ordinance.
And I think the other point is if there's board members or people in the public who are concerned about density issues and who's living in what, how many people should be in the home, you know, that's something that should be part of the comprehensive plan where you just take a look broadwise as a perspective from the city as a whole, as opposed to starting the process with a specific project. You know, if this is something people feel really strongly about, that a home with so many square feet, you only have so many people, that's how we do it under the comprehensive plan, but we don't do it, I think, by setting up specific covenants within documents. That's, that's my perspective on it.
So, so with that, can you repeat the condition that you were talking, or speaking of before?
That the covenants and restrictions must be completed in substantially the same format as the examples that was provided and recorded prior to the building permit application, which would give them plenty of time to make it site-specific before you're ready to get a building permit application.
So that was a condition different than what P and Z said.
So just for clarification, the, the document that we've been going back and forth on is, it's a LURA, it's a land use restriction agreement. It's produced by Missouri Housing Development Corporation. And we've provided the, the form of that that's recorded on the first and second phases. And every intention would be that the third phase would be in the same format as to that, that the agency completes that form, so that's our intention.
Any questions?
So are, are we thinking that we don't even want that as a conditional use?
Well, I think we put the conditional use as Jack stated, not as it's stated in their minutes. Because he, the minutes left included the maximum occupancy information, what he just said is conditional use, didn't include that.
Correct.
And so that's, I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
And I'd also like to add that the property cannot be subdivided at any time in the future, which is part of what we've recently fixed. Some situations where duplexes and multifamily was split up and made illegal lots. This way here, it will stay the, the project that they're presenting in the future and not turn into a problem down the road.
Is that to be considered a conditional use though, because isn't that already an ordinance what we did? If you can't subdivide, what is it, where do we go? P U D cannot be subdivided, is that already in place, so we don't really need a condition on it, or do we need a condition on it?
Are you asking me, Gary?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
I, I think it's best practice to require it as part of the conditional use and also as part of the ordinance, because I, I think it gives the landowner the most, the, the maximum notification on it. And I also think it's good, because I think if you make it part of the conditional use, if at some point there was for good reason, Gardner Capital wanted to come and say, hey, we want to split this into two projects, they can come back and request an amended conditional use permit to address that condition.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the conditional use permit with the added conditions stated by Jack Hannaf for the Hawthorne Senior Housing Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alden Frederick, roll call vote.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yeah, I have another comment real quick, but really, several comments were made about, in the meeting, about concerns about management of property. And I think your firm has demonstrated with the other Hawthorne project that it's a very well-known project. And from my perspective, I have a great deal of confidence that we've won going forward.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jack.
Welcome, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda would be hearing from Maintenance and Grounds Director, Brad Fuzicruz.
Evening, we have six items to be approved for sale tonight, to be put on gov deals and sold to the highest bidder. These are the.
Oh, we needed one more.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the list of equipment to be sold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Frederick, signed by Alderson Holly, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
I would say don't start that, or will not start, that's poor condition, Brad.
All right, next item on the agenda would be hearing from Public Works Director, Guy G.
First item I have is the salt spreader, skid-mounted material spreader. The budget amount was ten thousand, six hundred dollars, I came over budget for ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. And this is a state contract.
Is there a reason why this wasn't in the cassette agenda?
Because it was over budget.
Any questions?
So disappointing.
More statements? I entertain a motion to award the salt spreader bid to, is it Viking Sees?
So moved.
In the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, a statement. Gotcha. Motion made by Alderson Hall, or Cassely, signed by Alderman Frederick, roll call vote.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item I have is the cleanup, the alley between Steinhegen and Cherry Street. We received some complaints about the alley with stormwater running through. It's been sucked and piled up for years and blocking stormwater, so we went ahead and cleaned that alley out. And that, we finished that today. It's regarding stormwater, we had complaints about stormwater not running through and backing up the people's yards.
So you said you finished that today?
Yes, well, I went, I go by today and it was seen as drawn, so.
So it's starting to, it's starting to clean up?
Yes, it's, they completed.
So you're not really seeking approval on the.
No, I'm just letting you know that we got, we received a complaint and, and I don't know if it went to all the board members or not, but I'm.
I know, I'm just seeking one.
You're aware of it.
I mean, this, this is an issue of an alley a block long that's never been opened. There's always been some disagreements about, among the neighbors about how the alley is to be treated. And it came up many years ago at city council, we told them to fix their own problems, otherwise we'd open the alley and clean it out, and they didn't want that, so.
Yes.
Alderson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda would be bills to ordinances. Entertaining motion for the first reading of bill number forty-one dash fifteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Frederick.
In ordinance, accepting the preliminary subdivision plat for Warrenton Senior Housing by the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading of passage of bill number forty-one dash fifteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Frederick.
In ordinance, accepting the preliminary subdivision plat for Warrenton Senior Housing by the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries five one.
I want to say I voted no, because I'm trying to figure out where this is. We didn't really say.
Yeah, well.
It's in the center of our new piece of property. It's where the old Sprick House used to be. It was never in the city.
Yeah, that would, probably would have been helpful to disclose to the public.
Yeah, yeah, the public needs to know, "We purchased this ground, we closed it all, but there was a small section of it that had never been annexed into the city, and so we're annexed it, and so we can develop it."
Use it.
So we can use it, and it's in the city ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries five one. Next item on the agenda would be resolution number three thirteen, and the first reading